Thank you. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
District five, Mr. Clay.
Here.
District six, Ms. Shoppa.
Here.
District seven, Mrs. Palmer.
Here.
District eight, Mr. Fox.
And I'll make the call here.
Thank you. For those at home and for those in the audience here, if you hear a voice yell out, hopefully you will not, but we are joined by Mr. Nick Long who will serve as a parliamentarian. I'll get, I'll get to it. Yes. Thank you. Okay, got you. Mr. Nick Long has agreed to join us as our parliamentarian until he says he doesn't want to join us anymore as a parliamentarian. So, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Long.
And hope you can have a nice, relaxing, quiet evening.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to you.
Sounds good to me.
And according to school board policy, BDD, electronic participation in a meeting from remote locations. A school board member may participate in a meeting by electronic means when a quorum of the school board is physically assembled at the meeting location and arrangements have been made for the voice of the remote participant to be heard by all persons at the meeting location. Those requirements have been met. The board must approve this by a majority vote. Mr. Lloyd did let me know that he could not join us tonight in person and would like to dial in remotely. If I could get a motion to allow him to join electronically.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say no. Mr. Lloyd, can you hear us?
I can, thank you.
Very good. We can hear you loud and clear as well. Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Will we approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say no. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say no. Very good. We didn't have anybody sign up for citizen comments tonight. And Dr. Husken, the floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and love to see all of you all here this evening. And for those of you all, we have several folks joining us virtually tonight and just so great. It is the July meeting and so a lot of folks are on vacation, but we're just excited to have so many folks in the room. It's gonna be a great night, a lot of, lot of exciting things on the agenda tonight. Since we were last together, a lot of folks think that school is the sleep in the summer, but absolutely not. Because as soon as we send the children home, we start getting ready to open school again. And we have been super busy doing that. One of the biggest things that, that has been happening, June twenty fifth and twenty sixth, we had our administrative retreat. And we spent a lot of time focusing on what our theme for the coming year is going to be. And we're ready to launch that tonight. So, tonight, I'm happy to let everyone know that our theme for the coming year is shaping the future, one masterpiece at a time. And what our focus is going to be is you will see a focus on innovative learning practices, more hands-on. We're gonna look at ways to just, there is no box, okay? The only time you, you think about, you'll always hear the cliche, "Think outside the box." Well, the only reason there is a box is because someone decided there was one. So, let's just decide there isn't one in our classrooms anymore. We're gonna just think about different ways to use critical thinking skills, different creative pathways, just centering around the arts. And so, you're gonna be hearing way more about that. So, the way that we launched that was we spent a day with our administrators at the prisery. And thanks to Kristy Johnson and her team there, we spent a day engaged in art ourselves through drama and theater and, and actually doing art and dance and all sorts of things. And again, we had no box. So, it was just an incredible day. And all of those ideas started flowing and hopefully you will see those filter back into our classrooms in all kinds of different ways. We are anxiously awaiting to see if we get an innovation grant for the high school because it's, again, it's, we always think about, oh, we're gonna do these creative things at the lower levels, but really, i- it needs to, to happen at our high school. And what that looks like is, and, and I've been talking about this since, since I got here, is cross-curricular projects, real life, hands-on, where we have CTE partnering with core classes and partnering with the arts and, and challenging our kids with real life, real application, hands-on, on things that just challenge our kids in different ways. And again, more on that. It's coming. But just, again, tonight, I just wanna launch, launch our theme and get folks excited. You'll, you'll be hearing more about that as our showcases this year. Each school will be showing you what the theme looks like in their building this year. So, again, just, just be getting excited about that. So, we're super excited about opening the brand-new high school and you see that that's coming. But please know that there's so much more than just a building coming. It's, and I've been, I've said that from the start. It's not just about a building. It's about how we prepare our children to take pathways, to learn differently, and that starts from when they are very, very small. So, I'm gonna end with one last exciting surprise. And I've been sitting on this one since last spring. We were able to get this very exciting surprise from a neighboring agency. And I want to introduce you to Gus the Learning Bus. Gus the Learning Bus is currently being used as a mobile preschool classroom. And Dr. Hogs has a couple different, we have Halifax-ed Gus the Learning Bus. And you can see that it has Halifax County Public Schools on it now. But inside, it is fully equipped with all kinds of games and puzzles and everything. When this moves, the things inside don't move, except for the, the mobile, you know, the books and all of those things. But those get pulled, you know, put away. But the shelves and everything are already, they're attached to the, to the bus. But this, you will see Gus, the bus, go out to, it can go to festivals and churches and, and wherever, wherever we want to take it. There, again, there's no box. There's no, there's wheels on that bus. So, Gus can go wherever we decide he wants to go. We can partner with whatever we decide to do. So, again, this is just another way that we are gonna shape the future, one masterpiece at a time. So, we're super excited. We're ready to go. And we just can't wait to see our kids again in just a few weeks.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Husken. Appreciate that. Well, good evening, everybody. We do have a lot of good and fun things going on. School is coming along. We'll hear a little bit more about that shortly. The sports fields, we're moving slowly, maybe towards a plan. We'll, we'll, we'll see what, what that brings later on tonight. But let's talk about something that we have not talked about in some time, Esser funds and Esser funding. Reason for that is they were supposed to be spent, right? September of twenty four, we were so, we were supposed to liquidate those funds. We went through the proper steps. We, Dr. Buckloo, went through the proper steps and asked permission to do a later liquidation of those funds. Reason being, about two point three million dollars was earmarked for the replacement of HVAC units in Sinai and Meadville. Thought that work would be done better and performed a little bit better with kids not, not in school. So, so, some things changed while we were, while we were holding those funds and hoped to use them. Some cuts came down from the federal government, particularly, particularly the Department of Education. Unfortunately, those unused Esser funds were involved in some of the cuts and the funds were taken away. Credit to Dr. Buckloo. She reworked that budget and made things work even without two point three-ish million. Also credit to everyone up here because I didn't see anybody going full blast to social media complaining about this. We worked quietly, sometimes not too quietly, but we did work quietly behind the scenes. It worked within the appeals process that was set up. Special thanks to our delegate Tommy Wright, State Senator Tammy Bullock, U.S. Congressman John McGuire, and many, many others who sent letters and made phone calls on our behalf. The story has a happy ending. Couple weeks ago, we were told that our project had been reviewed and approved and the funds would be coming back to us. So, again, Dr. Buckloo, thank you for all your hard work. Everybody up here who helped with this, thank you. It was a team effort. Thank you so much. Mr. Clay?
I have a question before Mr. Clay comes on.
Yes, sir, Mr. Fox.
Explain to me that, so far, you said we lost it, then we got it back. Could you, could the two of you explain to me why we're spending that kind of money on Sinai and anybody else that's sixty years old? Because that school needs to be rebuilt. It needs to be that and the other school out there in Meadville needs to be redone. So, why are we spending good money on getting that done when we overlooked it for the last eighteen years?
Did the majority of the board vote to do that? Yeah.
Well, I don't care if they did. I still want the question asked. I asked the question.
You said, "Why are we doing it?" Because the majority of the board voted to do it.
Oh, so the majority of the board think that the fact we gone all these years without that and that we're gonna spend this money is all right when we got an idea about maybe doing something with some money to build two new schools, which I've talked about, right? Which we had talked about even before you guys came on board, that what we were gonna try to do. We were gonna try to relieve Sinai and relieve Meadville and even working another school out there. But we already spent extra money on that that we didn't need to do. Because why spend that money when we got the opportunity to make the right decision about moving in there? So, that tells me what you gonna do. What it tells me, now that you tell me different, that when the time comes in twenty seven, that you're not gonna do anything about Meadville and, and Sinai. Just gonna put them back out there just like they were, being ADC, ADD insufficient, being everything else. And why in the world are we gonna spend on that when we can build new schools and not waste that money? But since y'all already voted, I guess that includes me.
I was gonna say, you are part of the board as well.
I'm stupid for doing that if I voted for it because I did not understand why we would do that. Why, I thought we was through spending earth's money. Because I was under the impression you couldn't spend earth's money on teachers and we ended up doing it. That, is that true?
No.
Well, it is true. Don't tell me it's not true.
Spending on them, that money.
No, I, no, we spent money, we spent earth's money on teachers.
Yeah, HVAC.
Spent on HVAC.
Uh-huh.
It was spent on HVAC.
HVAC. No, we spent earth's money because we said, we, the principal that was removed from the elementary school out in the county, she was taking off her regular salary and earth's money was given to her. And the vice principal that was over at the middle school was relieved of his dues because wasn't any earth's money for him to be starting the next year. So, that tells me we were doing that. So, y'all are telling me one thing and the reality is something else, unless I'm wrong because that is what happened. Unless y'all proved to me that it didn't happen.
There were, there were different categories of Esser funding. Some was for building, some was for staffing. There were different categories of how Esser funding could be used. But now, all of it was supposed to be done by September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. There was a late liquidation application for HVAC projects because units couldn't have come, didn't come in in time, the buildings couldn't be done in time because of the labor shortage. There were reasons. And if you applied for it and you qualified for it, then you could get an extension on it. So, those two projects qualified for it because we couldn't get the, the units in in time. And so, that's why those two schools qualified for it, only for HVAC, not for any of the people or not for any of those job-related ones. But for that particular pot of money, those projects did qualify. So, that's, that is the reasoning for that.
That's that. That's HVAC.
Just the HVAC.
I was talking about this principal out at that school, that the teachers out there didn't like, you guys removed it.
And she, and so those jobs, all of those people.
Well, I, I didn't finish.
Okay.
I, that particular one, she was moved over to the, over to the high school and get a position. How was she paid? Because if she was removed from that as a principal, why would she go over there at that salary? And that, then I was told, well, she was gonna go and work in the Esser funds. And then at the end of the time, yeah, I'm telling you like it is, that what happened was she was gonna go anyway. And then you did the same thing with Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jackson was put over there at, at Sinai.
This personnel, this personnel.
No, that mean personnel, personnel people down here, they not even in the building. They not even on our boardroom. There's no personnel. So, it can't be personnel. Cause there only be personnel, people here.
Maybe, maybe we could continue this at a later time. I think that we need to continue with the.
I, I agree with that. We do need to continue, sir. But we need to have a question answered because we haven't done that.
Maybe you could bring it up and, and new business or aggressive or something. We're, we're just wondering, all being stated.
I'm bringing it up because it has been brought up. And we would be glad to, that's what it amounts to.
Do you?
That's what it amounts to.
Do you want to address the new business, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. I, I just addressed it. I just see what we're gonna do by it because you're telling me, you telling these people out here one thing and you did something else.
No, Mr. Fox. Mr. Fox, the positions ran out.
You just said you did HVAC. You didn't say you did that principal and that assistant principal, did you?
Mr. Fox, the positions ran out.
Yes or no? A yes or no?
Ms. Fox.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, um, so the initial question, Mr. Fox, was the money on Sinai. We did not go into, we did not go into personnel. Your initial question was the funding that was spent on the school.
Mm-hmm.
That funding was approved to spend on that school.
Right.
Had nothing to do with personnel.
Well, that's, that's not true.
Hold on a minute. I, I wanna, oh, no, I wanna finish. I, I wanna finish.
You and her and him are all the same thing.
I want to finish.
Point border.
Yes, Miss Yaw.
We're speaking over each other. Perhaps we can move on and, and take this up at a later time.
Correct. But I'm gonna finish. The question that he asked was about the funding. And I'll be the first one to say, if those schools are in bad shape and they need to rebuild, we need to address at a later time. But we've got children in those schools and they need to be addressed now, not later. So, that's why we voted on the funding to go into those schools. Those children need that funding for those HVACs, for what they got now. We can discuss that and other, other, other business. But when you're going into personnel and calling names, we've got an issue.
I didn't call personnel because the people aren't here.
All right, we're gonna move on. We can, we can discuss it at a later date.
This is what we got going on, folks. Y'all listening to that? This is what we got going on.
Please, listen. Board members and committee reports.
He, he, he did not thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I heard him say no, but he was, anyway. Thank you, Mr. Long. You want to talk about anything with the sports facility?
I can.
Yeah, I didn't, sorry to put you on the spot, but.
Yeah. So, we had a couple of meetings about the sports facility and we had all the coaches there. We had administrators there. The meeting went really well. We got a lot of ideas from the coaches. Track, especially, I wanna shout out to them. They told me stuff that I had no clue that we needed or we didn't have. And, and thank God they were in that meeting because I would've never known. The AD was there, Mr. Davis was there, like I said, all the coaches. And there was a lot of good ideas brought up. One of the things that we brought up was cutting costs, trying to get the price down. And I think designs and, and bills and there was different philosophies. We were specific when we talked to the baseball and softball coaches, they do not want their fields turned. They want their fields left like they are. They want things addressed around their field to make it nicer. Football had a lot of things they needed addressed and he brought some good ideas to the table. One of the things we brought to the table was a metal building to facilitate all the athletes. Tennis, everything. I mean, and, and maybe that would suffice as a field house too, to cut down on some costs instead of building a big brick building. Maybe we can have a metal building to help with everything. Like I said, every coach there brought good ideas, good intentions. The students, student athletes, they were there. They brought a bunch of good ideas and a bunch of good things to the table. In, in my opinion, I think we're in a good place. I, I really do. I, I think, you know, we're trying to cut the costs down. We're trying to get it to where we can move forward on this and, and hopefully we have some good news tonight.
Thank you. Good report. I, I agree. I was fortunate enough to be in the room for, for both meetings and thought it went well. A lot of, a lot of good ideas. Any other committees meet? There's nothing listed. Just in order to look at anybody. No? Okay. Dr. Buckloo?
Good evening. I wanted to bring everyone up to date on where we are in the finances of our high school. So, it's, we're getting to the wrap-up time, which is so exciting. I've put together a few slides to bring back up the high school obligation. This is still an item that we have got to address. And if you could go to the next slide, I put on this slide what we have done thus far. We have issued a million-dollar check as part of our four-million obligation. That went out in FY twenty-four. This past year, FY twenty-five, we issued three hundred and four thousand and twenty-three dollars towards kitchen equipment that we paid outright. And that also goes towards the obligation. So, thus far, we have paid one million, three hundred and four thousand and twenty-three dollars. We still have a remaining two million, five, six hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars to pay as part of our obligation. In the next slide, I want to show a scenario. The top part is just repeating what I went through. I just wanted it on one sheet so we wouldn't have to go back and forth. So, if you look at final scenario, we did discuss with, after we got our letter back saying that Esser is available. So, the, the way Esser works is you spend the money and you get your reimbursement. So, in FY twenty-five, we had bills we had to pay to the contractors on the HVAC systems. So, we did pay five hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-four cents, which is due back to us. I would like to propose that that five hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-four cents goes towards the obligation. So, we're gonna get a revenue of that. That's money that was last year. So, this money is coming in and it's free and clear, free and clear money that we haven't even put into the budget. So, that money can be utilized to help with our obligation. In turn, this current fiscal year, we did not put a revenue in for Esser because under our belief, we were not going to receive those funds. So, we're gonna have a surplus of one million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventeen. After we expend those bills, we'll have a revenue in addition to our budgeted revenue. So, my proposal is we also use that revenue towards our obligation. It is not hitting against our current budget. It is not hitting against our carryover. We're not touching that. The third piece that we would like you to consider, and this, this could be a moving number. So, we have to monitor this final number. The final number is shocky's contingency. So, our understanding is whatever the contingency is, returns and reverts back to the school division. So, at this very moment when we got our last packet, it was six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-six cents that we could use of that to go towards the high school obligation. This would allow us to pay up-to-date everything without touching our current budget, without touching our carryover, with monies that we did not anticipate this year to even have coming through. Should that number from the shocky not come through, then we would have to get creative and find another route. But that is only six hundred and seven, not, I'm sorry about the word, only. I know that's still a lot of money. But we would, we would just need to be creative on how we will reach that number. So, next slide, I do propose that tonight you take that into consideration and approve the plan so that we can move forward and get things aligned with paying off our part of the obligation. And we, we must do our obligation because once the bond runs out of money, the remaining two point six nine five is our obligation to pay out of the one twenty-nine. So, that's my presentation on this portion.
Yes, Ms. Runyon?
Quick question for you. Thank you for putting this together. Did they, do you have a timeframe in mind where these Esser funds will be given back to us?
Yes, ma'am. So, the five hundred thousand line, we would anticipate by the end of August.
Of this year?
Of this year.
Okay.
Once the work is complete at both job sites, we will file for that reimbursement of one point four. And that should be in, within thirty days of filing for it. So, that would also be in this year. They are wrapping up. They're set to be done before the students enter back into the building. So, I can safely say we could find that money coming September, October.
Okay. And then, just one more. With the shocky contingency, I see that as of June twenty twenty-five, they haven't, I know you said, "As long as we get that money." I haven't heard anybody mention that that number's going down.
So, as needs arise, they may have to go into that fund. We still don't have the solid number on demolition.
Okay.
So, that, that's the iffy piece. So.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes.
The other, may I?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
The other piece to it too is the, the whole cost of the building may come in at less than one twenty-nine, so our full obligation may be less than four million. So that was the agreement as well, like if, if it, if they don't need our entire four million, then we don't have to pay the full. It's just whatever the, the last piece of the bills are, whatever the last full amount of demolition ends up being. So that's kind of where we are, so, thank you for that.
No question. Ms. Ms. Comer, raise your hand.
Misses Roney can ask my question, I'm good.
Okay, you good, okay, Mr. Potts.
Dr. Buck.
Yes, sir.
These figures you're running down, are they based on the amount of calculation of money we're receiving from the, the one penny?
No, sir, these are not, this has nothing to do with the one penny.
But isn't it true that we are something to do with the one penny? When we're saying that we're gonna make so much a year, but from what everybody's telling me, we're making more than that every year, well, we will not need to worry about this, is it?
That's coming up in just a minute.
Well, I do have some information to share with you, um, after we, we talk about this that goes into the one per- the one percent interest that you're speaking of. Uh, do you have some information to talk about after this piece? This piece does not include any of that information.
So you'll be able to answer the question at that time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good enough.
Thank you.
I'll be looking for it.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve this as Dr. Bucklou has presented it.
Second.
Call for roll call.
We got a late second on, on David, you, you got what you needed up here? Any other discussion? If Mr. Potts wants a roll call vote.
District one, Mrs. Roney?
Yes.
District two, Mr. Lloyd?
Yes.
District four, Mr. Mason?
Yes.
District five, Mr. Clay?
Yes.
District six, Michelle?
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Mrs. Comer?
Yes.
District eight, Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
My only regret is Ms. Hicks is not here, she is pushed to have this answer.
Yes, she has, yes.
This, this question answered for so long.
She was traveling, but she's on the plane, so she's on airplane mode.
Oh.
But she was listening.
Yep, yep.
Deal, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, and I appreciate you, you're, you're gonna step up and do the, um, uh, finance report.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Simpson was supposed to be here, uh, we had a meeting with him this morning. Uh, I believe he was notified late this afternoon that he did not have his board's approval to be here to go over these finance numbers, so I really appreciate you stepping up at the last minute to,
Sure.
to take this over, thank you.
Sure, so I will summarize what we had in our finance, um, meeting together. Um, and it's just a short screen that I put over and I apologize for the alignment. I tried five hundred different ways and it would not work for me, so that eight hundred thousand just wants to stick out for itself. Um, so what we discussed is there are different source, revenue sources that we can look at to help, um, fund the athletic fields without touching our carryover, without touching our budget. These are funds that already exist, we're not going out looking for loans. We have done a lot of work to try to scrape together every possibility that we could that doesn't touch our education instructional funding. So if you take a peek, we're gonna first look at the one percent interest, which Mr. Potts alluded to a few moments ago. Currently, it stands at three million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That is what is sitting in the, uh, account currently. So that has been earned over the course since twenty twenty-one. Um, it did, did, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Potts, I want, I want you to understand that that is the above and beyond, that's what they said the one percent was gonna do. That is, uh, that's the money above the one percent, where it's done better than they said and that's every year, that's the money over and above, more than what they said it was gonna do. That's the total of what it's done, better than what they said it was gonna do. So that is money available that we can use, that they're not using to pay off any debt with.
Thank you for explaining it, but I already knew that.
Okay.
The three point, how much million?
It is three point three three four, one oh three point five eight. So three million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Okay.
One hundred and three dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Okay, that's in excess.
That's in excess. So they, they've given us a chart that had the projected sales revenue versus the actual, and this is the variance.
So they give us the projection for the next?
They've given us the projections all the way to twenty fifty-one, which I can share with the board.
And what was that?
Well, the, the total projected sales tax revenue is one hundred and thirty-nine million. The actual collections thus far is twenty million. Their variances of that twenty million is three point six nine, but they have to account for the property, so that was spent in there, so that brings it down to three point three.
Account for the property to do what?
I can share this. So the property was sold to us, the Powell property. This money was used for that.
So you went from?
Three hundred thousand.
To what?
So it went through, from three point six to three point three. So your total number is three million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and three dollars and fifty-eight cents, that's what's available.
You said it was gonna bring us how much, about fifty-one? Hundred and twenty-nine thousand, hundred and thirty thousand, hundred and thirty million, right?
So that's the sales tax all the way through twenty fifty-one.
Okay, how much is that?
Hundred and thirty-nine million.
And we gonna lose three point six of that or three point three of that?
We're proposing that we utilize three point three million. But that, what you're speaking of is the revenue versus the interest, we're not touching the revenue. We're only touching, requesting to touch the interest. None of the monies that the one percent was collected for.
But it's there, it's there, are, are going to be there at that time, right?
Right, this is, this is money, sitting outside.
Remember, it's somewhere where we can, we can touch it if we want to, right?
If it's approved by both your board and the board of supervisors, correct.
Okay. Again, that's hundred and twenty-nine million. That's what you're saying.
No, it's three point three million.
No, I got that, I'm.
No, the other revenue, no, sir, no, no, only the variance can be utilized, only.
I didn't say that, I, I just wanna know what the total amount of money you were saying was gonna be ready by twenty, twenty fifty?
Hundred and thirty-nine million.
Hundred and thirty-one, thank you. That's what I put in. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Comer.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, just for transparency sake and also because some of these things, I don't know what they mean, can you, I, I know the top one, but can you just for the public, can you go over what each line mean?
I plan to.
Okay, well, I will be quiet and let you do that, ma'am.
I, I'm sorry, I was just answering questions at the first line, I, I intended to explain.
I'll be quiet. You're for, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next line is what is projected as a variance for neck, at the end of this year. We can't count it until it hits so that we know what the actual is. We are projecting the eight hundred thousand will be an additional variance that we can add to the s- source of funding for the athletic fields, that's eight hundred thousand dollars. The original loan that, the bond, the original distribution had an, a two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar extra over the one oh five, so it is one hundred and five, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. The two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars is to be used at the high school in some fashion. We have to use it on that campus, so that two twenty-three could be for the athletic field straight out because that's what it's intended for, is the campus. Then, our bond is accruing interest, so in addition to, um, the distribution that's remaining, we have comfortably ten million dollars to put towards a project on the high school campus. It has to be for the high school campus, so that ten million has to be there, that's in the wording of the bond, so the bond was taken out for that reason. Then we discussed our debt service, there's a reduction ex- expected in the debt service, um, and Mr. Simpson explained that right now we could utilize one million, three hundred and seven thousand dollars towards this project on the debt reduction service. Then we have our tax stampings for the owner direct purchases, which we have been doing throughout the project. Currently is at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we can also utilize. So all of this added together is sixteen million, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that we, as of today, can request from our board of supervisors to go towards the athletic project. Do you have any other comments from today that you would like to address Dr. Husken in addition that I may have missed?
I do.
You, you good?
I have one follow-up question, that's it.
Okay, okay.
Ladies first.
So are there any, uh, any of those buckets, is there more money in them that you have presented? So we're only using a portion of those, or is this emptying each one of those buckets? I know the ten thousand, the, I'm sorry, the ten million one is set for the high school and that's it, period, the end. But the other buckets, are, is that gonna deplete them completely?
So no is the answer.
Okay.
The interest will continue past this point.
Okay.
So what I shared on the one percent interest is just where we are to date. We will continue to accrue interest over time. We cannot project past next year where that is because we don't know the interest rates and all of those things.
Of course. That makes total sense, yes, ma'am.
So that's gonna continue to grow, so your first and second line basically are, they're just what's there right now.
Okay.
They will continue to grow. The bond service will continue to grow up until we're out of money, but it's gonna grow at a smaller rate.
Okay.
Um, the tax savings, of course, that's gonna be done once we are done spending money. So, but your interest will continue to grow.
Okay, thank you, I'm, I'm finished.
Okay, Ms. Yaw, would you?
Yeah, um, what's that?
Yeah, I think Mr. Potts said something.
Can you, um, can you restate the, the description for the first two again there? Is it the excess revenue above what they were expecting to receive for the one percent, so it's not interest?
That is correct.
Or is it interest on that revenue?
So it is above and beyond, it is the variance.
Okay, so it's the revenue coming in that's above what they expected for the one percent, it's, it's not interest on any of that?
That's correct, it is above and beyond it.
And how about fiscal year twenty-five, is that just a typo that it should be included? It has fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-four and then the next line is fiscal year twenty-six?
Yeah, it probably should say twenty-five.
So three point three million is?
Actually, the first line should say through twenty-five.
Okay.
The twenty-six is the end of this fiscal year, so it's the first line that does have a typo, apologize for that.
I see. Um, and then the, the debt services, the one point three million.
Yes.
Is that our, our payoff from the debt services or, or what is that specifically?
So on their long spreadsheet that they've got of all the debt that's dropping off, yes, that exact sheet.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Simpson, he didn't share the sheet with us, this is just what he quoted us, that it would be available.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have that sheet to tell you which line he's speaking of, but that's the number he gave us.
Cause it was l- one line in twenty twenty-eight.
That's what I thought was.
Middle school?
Yes.
Middle school.
So this one point three is from, from the middle school, debt payment service?
That's what he told us today.
Okay, um, because there's another line in there starting in twenty-eight, um, that they had taken out or they had reserved two point five million per year, um, out of the four point six million that we're paying currently. So once we pay that off, four point six million.
Yes, you're right.
Yep.
They took two point five of that and withheld it because they were expecting revenues to be reduced from the Mayo plant closing. Looks like that's not closing, so is that a potential another two and a half million per year starting in twenty twenty-eight or so?
It is starting in those years, we did bring that up today, but for the immediate project, it would not be available.
Okay.
That's a future, but yes, yes, you are correct, money is future on the table.
I just wanted to make sure that's separate from the one point three. Excellent.
So that is, that is a good point of clarity because this is not, I think that's important for the board to understand and for everyone else to understand. Doing this project does not limit us from, because this is cash on hand and it's one percent. The whole idea for the county getting behind this one percent is interest like this is going to continue to grow and continue to build pots of money that is gonna allow this board to plan for future projects and it is going to allow for the long-range planning that needs to happen. Just, Mr. Potts, exactly what you're talking about, larger, long-range planning that needs to happen for the other schools. So once the high school is taken care of, then people need to get around a table and start talking about, okay, so what, now what? Because this kind of planning, that interest on that one percent, that over and above money is going to continue to grow just like this, because that was the beautiful design of that one percent. And, and we can watch other counties around us, that's kind of what they are doing, the ones that have gotten that one percent, that's what they're doing. So, that's the, that's the down-the-road piece that needs to happen. So, to answer Ms. Commerce's question, no, it doesn't empty completely. It needs to, okay, so let's start having that conversation about what are the things that need to happen after that.
And this also does not take any money out of the capital improvement fund?
Nope.
No.
No, ma'am.
Or carryover, not a dime.
Or carryover.
Right, that's what, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Potts?
Yes, thank you. Going back to this, well, one thing, thank Ms. Shawwell for bringing that up because I'm glad you brought that up because what we, what we have a tendency to do in this county is to put things off until they over cost. That's what happened with the high school. We started, we could've got, we could've got everything built for a hundred and nine million, that's the blue to elementary school, but we paying forty million dollars more because we procrastinated. So it would behoove the rest of this board to make sure we don't do that, procrastinate, so we can't put this further in debt. Uh, the debt services you got, that is one point three oh seven, it has a figure that you said Mr. Simpson gave you, but he, he couldn't go with that because he wasn't approved by his board to give us that or use that?
Oh, in, in his email, he said the figures that he gave us this morning were accurate, but he was instructed that he could not come and deliver the news to us or do this presentation for us.
He couldn't come, so that means the one point three oh seven is still good.
All these figures are accurate and what he went over this morning.
Well, is he not here? I just wanna make sure, cause it sounded like, if he didn't come, that didn't come, so, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Shaw.
Do we need a meeting, a, a joint meeting between the school board and the board of supervisors to walk through these numbers and get agreement between the boards?
Think that would be wonderful.
That will be after this, after we have a.
Okay.
After what?
They told, what he said this morning was after the, after this board decides on the plan for the design and all of that, the next phase would be a joint, a joint meeting. But you all have, you all have the first say, you all have to decide what it is that you want and to, on, and what it's gonna cost. Then the next piece is that joint meeting.
So we're looking at sometime in early August.
Or in the next, even sooner than that if you want to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mason?
Yes, Ms. Comer, yes, ma'am.
I would just like to recap, if we could, for my brain. Um, so all of this money that is presented up here is not allocated for anything else at the current moment. It does not touch our current budget or next year's budget. It does not touch our capital carryover money for the capital improvement plan.
That's correct.
So, I'm gonna just ask the question, if our presentation for this athletic complex is over said figure, where does that money come from?
We will have to ask for value engineering and trim this project.
Okay.
Or we can ask the board of supervisors. Don't say, uh, until you ask.
Okay, thank you.
You are correct.
Thank you, Dr. Bucklou, thank you for all the work you put in.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up and, and, and doing this again, last minute. Is that the end of that?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I think you're good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, gonna have an updated, uh, athletic.
Um, gonna have an updated, uh, athletic facilities presentation, Mister Mutt, Mister Tingle, and Mister Bane.
That stadium will be that bright. That's bright.
I appreciate that recap, Mister Bane, and that was, that was very accurate, so, Mister Mutt?
Thanks, thank you. Um, so what you are seeing here is the same presentation that we saw last time, with just a couple of things changed. Some change to the site plan and the area of the stadium, some changes to the main building, which we've been previously calling the field house, now it's more of a practice facility, um, but I went ahead and kept all the slides from the previous ones, in case you wanted to look back, uh, and, and we referred to, uh, and we looked at the last time. So with that, I'm just gonna ask to just advance, uh, you can stop right here, actually. Um, this is the overall site plan, um, and, uh, you can see the, you know, big difference is that the building that's right here does not look like the field house that, uh, you saw before, um, and I have a blow up of that plan, uh, to show you in a minute. Um, but, uh, we still have twice some concessions up in here in this area, we have a practice facility here, we have a separate little ticket booth right here. Previously, the ticket booth was a part of the field house, because the way it was located allowed us to do that. Uh, because of the way we're locating the, um, practice facility being that it's a, just a larger building. Um, we think this is probably the way it fits best on the site, and, and with the, the various changes in grading that we have, this was a flat area that we felt like we could fit it, and would be advantageous to the, uh, the football and soccer stadium. But that did mean that the ticket booth really needs to be a separate building to, uh, you know, the ticket, ticket booth with three windows. But, uh, we did, um, make some modifications, we have both the triple jump and the, uh, the long jump shown here, and the full vault shown here. And we have a flat area back here, it's a little bit higher, it's about six feet higher than the track, but there is an area back here that's flat enough to locate, uh, discus throw and a shot put area. Uh, and so we reconfigured, um, this, uh, this parking way out up here to make room for that. Um, the, uh, the distance here is about two hundred and thirty feet, uh, which is the regulation size. Um, and it's, uh, I, I, I know you may be thinking, hey, the throwing discus is ready to park cars, but that, that is the regulation length. Uh, it is considerably longer than, uh, the record throw for Halifax County. So, uh, so if you ever get, uh, a, a really impressive athlete in the discus, uh, you might wanna put a little fence there, but and for, 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 uh, all but the, uh, the nationwide record, that size should be just fine. Um, so why don't we go to the floor plan of the practice facility? Uh, we can just jump right past this, keep going. Uh, well, why don't we stop here, just to make sure I, I, um, caught all these points. This is, uh, same description as last time, but a few, few things might have changed maybe, um, new natural grass field, like we said last time, twenty one hundred capacity on the home side, thousand on the visitor's side, competition tracks, forced lighting, resurface the tennis courts with new lighting and new ten foot fencing. Um, and the existing faculty lot, which is just off, uh, to the northeast up there, uh, would be connected by a sidewalk, this sidewalk here to come down to the main gate. Uh, so the only changes there are the things I just described, about discus shot put, and the, uh, long jump, triple jump, and, um, so here's the, here's the practice facility. So this is a very different building, but this is, um, based on the description that we, that was pulled together after the, the meeting that we had. Uh, we think this is, uh, how it was described, um, if we missed it, obviously, let us know, and, uh, we'll make the revisions. But what it really is, is it's a big open, uh, um, synthetic turf area, uh, that looks like a portion of a football field. You got fifteen yards here marked out, you have a ten foot runoff on all four sides. Um, you have potential for some netting in here that can divide it into three areas, potential for some netting here, some batting nets, uh, padding cages. Um, opportunity for some o- overhead rolling doors along one edge, uh, to, uh, bring in some, uh, fresh air. Uh, it's similar to a facility in North Carolina that we were provided with as an example to use. Um, and then the, at this edge, uh, we got a couple, a couple of large storage rooms that are four hundred square feet each. One large locker room, this locker room is envisioning sixty lockers. And, uh, the lockers are two feet wide, which is the size that's usually used for a football. The largest of all your lockers is a football locker, so that can accommodate sixty two foot wide lockers. There's a corridor right here, so that those lockers can come in this way to the practice facility, but also out that way toward the fields. You've got your hydration room right here, with the doors up, headed up to the fields. This storage room, we have doors on both sides, so if you're storing things to be used on the competition field, you've got direct access, or it can be brought out here to this area. Another storage room over here that just has doors on this side, we can go back to the site plan and see that this area is kind of behind your stands, but certainly would be possible to put doors there. Little mechanical, electrical, and laundry area back here, here's your trainer area, again with doors on both sides. Uh, the locker rooms have toilets here, there's a coach's office with a coach's toilet here. So you got one locker room, team room, with sixty lockers, toilets, and showers, one office with space for two coaches, two four hundred square foot storage rooms, trainer's room with direct field access, hydration station with access to field and practice facility, laundry facility. So if we go back now to the, uh, to the, uh, field, the site plan. Yeah, so you can see that this whole side of the building is open this way, so that, you know, that one storage room is easily accessible from this side. Uh, you got these doors right here, so those, that one locker room comes out this way. Um, and your, your hydration station is right there with doors coming right here, so all that stuff has easy access to the stadium. This is the, twice concessions is the same as it was before. So that, that really is everything that's different, uh, from, from what you saw before. Does it seem that we hit the mark in terms of what was described?
Close.
Really, really.
You look good.
It looks good, I mean, let's, let's, we have some coaches here, I mean, it's, it's real, I mean.
It, it's, it's really close, the, uh, locker room size is just there.
It's, but it's livable?
Well, yeah, this is, yeah, I mean, this is, uh, just the conceptual diagram, and we, we still have to, like, really prepare the, the, the documents to build from.
Yeah.
Yep.
And as we get deeper and deeper into detail, we'll be sending lots of questions everybody's way, to refine things down and make sure we're getting them right.
Do you have security lights out there, on that, on the?
Yeah, yes, there will be security lighting.
I mean, on, on that building, just in case.
Building's a sight.
Okay. Thank you.
Mister Saunders, uh, athletic director, you are, I, again, I put Mister Clay on the spot, I may put you on the spot. If, if you want to, do you, do you like the look of what we've got so far, or?
I think that you hit the nail on the head with the three main concerns, we had the storage, locker room space, and I think amongst all the coaches with the indoor facility, and this is a huge space that can be utilized for a whole lot of our sports teams. So I like the conceptual design, just like Coach said, locker room space for the visitors, it's nice to look out for your visiting teams to come in with a nice space.
Got you.
I mean, overall, I think those three major things were better.
Thank you, perfect. Principal Davis, this is gonna be on the property that you supervise, sir.
Absolutely, but, um, I'm, I'm just excited about the, the, the playing area for all the teams, so, um, Steve, you guys did a great job of that, um, so, we appreciate that.
Wonderful, wonderful, questions? Anyone here, um, what we have so far, no, okay.
I'm excited that there's, that there's space that they will use and not wasted space of a, of a field house that, that they all just said is not, it was not gonna be conducive to what they wanted, I, I love that.
Mm-hmm. Yes, Michelle.
Do we have, do we have more, or, um, I have a couple of questions about the overall layout, can, should we go back to that, or do we wanna wait and finish your stop first?
Uh, the, the more part is, um, uh, the folks from Shockey will be talking about the, uh, the costing of it, but in terms of the design, um, I'm done.
Okay.
You want, you get the design, go ahead.
Yeah.
So any questions you have about here on that, I can answer.
Can we go back to the, the overall view? A couple of questions, um, I guess when you walk through the front gate there, you come through ticketing, you kind of come to the corner of that new facility there.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
Um, I know one of the prior renderings, you walked in and there's a flat wall, and it has the sign, you know, Halifax County Comets and all of that, um, we kind of lose that view, do you have any renderings yet of what that might look like when you walk?
No, I don't have any renderings.
Okay. Um, and second question, the fencing that goes around, it's, it's ten foot security fencing, but it looks like it stops and ties into the back of the, um, ball fields? Is that something where we can have that security fencing go all the way around all of the fields? Where students, you know, whoever can't just hop over the, the ball field fence? So we have a continuous ten foot fence around the entire facility?
Oh, okay. So, um, this, in this area where you're just seeing the, uh, the ball field fence, um, to continue it there.
Right. Right.
I believe we said that this fence was actually gonna be eight feet high, because we, we're going to the two hundred foot, uh, distance, and so we would do an eight foot wall. Um, this however, would, would be, I'm not sure what size fence, um, Shockey has planned there. John, uh, do, what, what height fence do we have for baseball? We'll make it, we can make it, which, which, what you want, I just, I was just asking you know what they had priced, you know?
If that's something we can look at. I, I think it would be good to have one fence, one tall security fence around the entire facility, instead of having it break and have shorter fences and, and, because security is, is one of the biggest reasons.
If this fence was sixty nine, would that be suitable?
So, so what she's, I, I get what she's saying, so what she's saying is, like, the outside, it, it, you got one angle of the fence, but the fence connects it to the corner of the building, she's talking about coming all the way around with the fencing, aren't you?
Around the entire facility, so we have one security fence that, that surrounds it, that's ten feet or, or however tall that, that security fence is gonna be, just so that we have the security, especially on the, on the bottom side.
Are we talking about these two areas right here, or is this what you're talking about?
Aside from the?
Right. Right.
Come on around the top, see?
Aside from the fencing that's already at the fields, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
We need a, uh, another perimeter security fence, is what she's?
Correct. Correct, one single perimeter security fence, because that's, that's one of the biggest reasons of, of this facility, is making sure that we have secure fields and facilities.
If you brought a fence around here, then, then you would be sort of si- trapping an area in between those two fences, and
Yeah, that's what she's talking about.
It's gonna affect for maintenance.
That might be, well, maintenance, uh, but that might actually present greater security issue to have this sort of slot in between two fences.
Yeah.
I think it would be better just to make sure that the, the two ball field fences are high enough to serve dual function, as both.
That fence is tall enough, yeah. That, that'd be fine, as long as, as long as we don't have a short little fence that, you know, people can just hop over and, and cause security issues.
We could just, perimeter fencing around the football field is eight feet, uh, there's fencing in between, uh, the, the, uh, I guess the baseball softball, because we have it sixteen, the outfield with baseball field is ten feet.
Okay.
Oh, that's plenty.
Okay.
Well, the only short fence that we have is the interior, uh, fencing around track, there's four feet, I think it's sixty or three.
But you don't see, but there's, there's actually a fence around the track here, that's the one that gets the visitors.
And that's fine, that's, that's not a perimeter security fence, so that, that's fine, um. And I know we have the separate parking area down in the bottom for the visitors, for the football, is it possible to have, and maybe this, this might not affect the layout, but have them be dropped off, up at the top by the ticketing, so that they can go through the security, um, weapons detection systems, walk around, and then they can be picked up on the bottom side after the games are over?
You talking about players, or?
Say again?
You talking about players, the players?
Yes, yes, the, the football players, the visiting football players, we have the parking lot down on the bottom, and I know it was mentioned, that's where they can park, they can go in and out from there. But if that, if we can make that just an exit, so that we don't have to have a separate, um, weapons detection system at that gate.
Hmm, that, that is certainly, um, you know, that's, that's a management issue, and if you want us to make this smaller, so it's less attractive for parking, uh, to really try to push people to the front, that's fine. Uh, this is envisioned mostly as your, your visitor bus turnarounds, with the players would come in this way, but if you want the players to come in this way in addition to spectators, that's, that's fine. Um, but, uh, like, weekends when you might have your own players coming to this facility to practice for a non-ticketed event, you could have them park back here, that was a, a request that we had had early on, without having some additional parking, came back in the stadium for
I don't really see too much, you can just have one.
Non-ticketed events.
Yeah, you can, you can have it be an exit only, because that's why you have to have so many exits, but they can, they can do that. So the, the things that are not included, like we have the walkway going to the tennis courts, um, how is that gonna work? Is there gonna be a, um, walkway going on the outside of the fence up to the school, or is it, they have to go through the system, then there's, or through the field there? Have you discussed any of that?
That is a question really I have for you all, because, um, we, we said we wanted the, the tennis courts to be part of the fenced complex, and I had initially interpreted that to mean, you know, get the tennis courts down, down low someplace, and, and then we discussed that, and that was, that was not the intent. Intent was to leave the tennis courts here and just resurface them, so how do you get that fenced and also be part of this? You know, it's, it's a long way, and it's up a steep hill, which is why we're showing sort of snaking, because it's a, it's a steep climb. You can certainly do stairs, uh, you know, and they can climb that, that sto- slope easily, but whether you would have, um, you know, fencing along both sides of this walk?
Yeah.
It's a little strange, um, so, we're kinda wrestling with that one too.
Yeah. That's details, yeah, we can.
Mm-hmm.
So, so.
The, the.
Are, are you done, Michelle, sorry?
No, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, um, yeah, I think I'm good for now, thank you.
Mister Clay?
Appreciate you asking.
The, the only question I had, we talked about it, and I know you didn't say nothing about, so, down towards the, the baseball field, like in the corner of the softball field, baseball field, could we cut two in the fence, like, make two areas?
Yes. Yes.
For traffic, so?
Yep.
You know what I'm talking about, so like, we can get in and out quicker, instead of having to walk that whole path?
Yes, yeah, we can, we can put gates, uh, like, here and here, so that, uh, maintenance vehicles can move back and forth between the.
And also with the spectators, where I was talking about, you know, the spectators coming in, if they park down here, and say the A D wants to do a ticket booth down here for baseball and softball, so they ain't gonna walk from the top all the way down? Does that make sense, where the gate is?
My understanding is we only want visitors coming through the one gate, that's what I think the committee decided.
Otherwise you have to have multiple security detection systems, plus gates and security stand in there.
May I speak one second?
Yes, Miss Commerce.
So, my question with that is, is we have a lot of very good athletes with very good family support systems who are gonna wanna come and watch their children play ball. That is a very long walk from that parking lot for somebody's grandparents to make all the way back around to that parking lot. Is there, Mister Saunders, I, we talked about this.
So Steve and I discussed this, about managing the games, and right now, we're just so wide open, our candidates, and it's hard to have I C S security at three different spots, because a lot of places you can enter the, you know, athletic facility.
Right.
So the theory behind it was, one gate in, one gate out for security purposes, it just makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
But I see what you're saying, and, uh, we can make do as the board wishes, you know, if I need to move, you know, another ticket taken here to the baseball field to accommodate our fans, like, we can do it.
Well, I don't want to risk security, but I also don't want to rob
Yeah.
people from being able to watch their, their grandchildren play a sport that they really love. Is there, like, maintenance or something that can pick them up on a golf cart and take them to the ball field, or something along those lines? Or, I just, I feel like that is. Cause I just I feel like that is a really long walk.
Construction process, we use the golf carts to shuttle. Uh it is a very long way, I will say, especially if you use the additional parking that's at the existing uh faculty lot
Mm-hmm.
on the other side of the high school, it's it's a pretty long way. I mean, it's a conversation later, I guess I can ask Steve if we move the main entrance somewhere to a happy medium closer to the baseball and softball field to kinda, you know, cut the walk down on on our fans.
I just don't want us to forget anything for this amount of money.
Yep.
And I truly feel like we are doing family members of our student athletes a disservice to have their grandparents or anybody with an ADA type of issue to have that far of a hike. I mean, good gosh, that's like two feet on that on that TV screen. So I don't know what it's gonna feel like when they have to walk it or wheelchair it or whatever all the way to the baseball field. And you know, we want our our family to be able to come to any game that they can make it to, so that's that's my biggest concern with what we're being presented now, is that's just a long hike.
Which was leading to my next question with compliance. I I'm not up to the compliance of having one entrance and one exit, but I know there's a lot of regulations with handicap situations and all this. I mean, if there's a thunderstorm or or in, you know, in the spring of the year, we we have thunderstorms. We hiking up that path all the way to the top to get to our cars, I mean lightning can get on us quick. Kids gotta get out of there, nobody get out of that. That was my concern too. Was how far they've gotta go.
Right.
So and I didn't know the compliance issues with the state and whatever with, since it's gonna be gated, is there a fire department issue with fire marshals and stuff like that? I I don't know, that's why I'm asking, with the one gate.
Got to have a gate big enough for it to be equal to each other.
So in terms of emergency access, you know, we have another gate right here and we can add gates, you know, on the on the sides here for emergency access, that's.
Well, that's what I'm asking, for emergency service vehicles, you you have to have a gate large enough for them to access the facility.
Yeah. Absolutely, I I'm just, you know, thinking in terms of the uh, you know, the one in, one out
Yeah. Right.
for ticketed people and for security.
Perfect, okay, right.
Uh but um but we can keep studying this, yeah, we we have had the entrance up here for a long, long time because it's always been either in connection with the field house or there have been times where we had courts and concessions, it was part of that thing, there was times where we had two buildings, you enter between them. Um but at this point, um when we've just finally just said we have a ticket booth that's all by itself, I mean, you you could put the ticket booth here and have the entrance here so that it's halfway between.
That's.
That makes more sense, it does.
Yeah, yep.
So to get to the tennis courts from that ticket booth, you could uh park at the faculty lot and walk down to that ticket booth and then walk all the way up to the field.
You try to have the spectators.
Mister Munt, w- w- we're not, I mean, s- citizen comments were long ago, go ahead.
Um for spectators, if you try
Okay, thank you. Michelle, did you have a, I I know he's continuing on, but did you have something in here?
I I think Mr. Saunders brought it up, I I was gonna ask about moving the ticketing booth down so that it's closer in the middle.
Okay.
I s- I still don't like the orientation of the the ball fields and walking that long way, but I'll let the experts make that decision. Um but if we did move that ticketing booth down, it would also give us that wall there for the um indoor practice facility that we could have, you know, the big sign for Halifax County. Welcome type sign, so maybe that's something you can look at.
Mr. Chair.
I really like that idea.
Yes, Miss Spott.
Don't we need to take it out, ta- take it into a fact that we're gonna have some possible people coming in with with handicap? You you need to put them in a circle location?
I think we don't, we don't, we don't.
You did, I know y'all y'all talked about that, but it seemed like you were debating whether you were gonna put it in a center or not, whereas the center would make it easier for them as well as rest of the court.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
Okay, that's what we're gonna do, well, that's what we're thinking about.
That's what we're thinking about, yes, yes.
The entire path will conform to slopes. In fact, the entire drop from here, which is your highest point to here, which is your lowest point, um is less than a one on twenty slope, so you don't even have to provide ramps because this ramp, this slope is already gentle enough that by ramps, I mean handicap compliant ramps, uh with landings every thirty feet and handrails on both sides. What I'm saying is the whole thing is basically a ramp, but the slope is so gentle that you don't have to provide the handrails and the landings and that sort of thing, so there should be a nice gentle slope.
Any other questions for this part? Yes, Miss Culver.
Yes.
So can you explain to me exactly what's going to go on at the tennis courts the way they are presented right now? Like parking, access to them, other than I see the sidewalk, so I understand that, but as far as like how students will have to go, if things change and it is open to the public, there's already established parking there, will that still be there?
Are you talking about this parking that's here?
The actual tennis court parking is, I think, on down, isn't it? On the right side of your presentation, keep on going to the far end of the courts, to the right.
Yeah.
Down this way?
Keep going, yep, right there, that's where your parking is right now.
We haven't changed anything about that at all.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh and and this this path, that's an existing path, that will still be there. Uh this is a new path, but um but you would still be able to park here and and for like student athletes or for um non-ticketed events, you'd be able to access the way you always have.
Okay.
For ticketed events, my understanding is you you want everyone to be coming in through the one
Correct.
the one gate and then they they would just have to work their way around and up. Uh and that is a very very steep climb, I mean, that would be another one of those situations where it probably be good if you had some other measure to get a person uh the accessibility issues, you know, find a way to get them in here just using the the park system.
So is there going to be a sidewalk around the perimeter to that? Because there is no gate there at the current moment. So how are they gonna get in and then get to the tennis court paying their ticket? And especially if there is no I don't I don't know, I'm I'm confused. If there's no gate around this tennis court now, then what would be the purpose of them buying a ticketed, a ticket for this event at that ticket booth? I mean, I I don't, that just does not make sense.
I would assume the gates would be closed.
We don't charge for tennis, okay, we don't charge for tennis now.
There you go then, okay.
Oh, well, there's that.
Thank you. Okay.
That's great.
Do you have something else?
No.
Okay. You done here? If all the questions are done, anything else for Mister Munt on the design? All right, thank you. Mister Payne? Doctor Hawks. Doctor Hawks, can you bring your laptop here? Can you disconnect or you're gonna lose that if you do? Okay.
We just can't hear him, or I can't hear him.
Do we have a portable microphone?
Do we have a portable mic?
Barely. Sorry, we're supposed to get on, I think it's like.
No, okay. No, okay. Or we just talk to who we got? Okay, okay. All right, go ahead. The floor is whoever needs it.
Can he talk? I can't hear him.
Use your teacher voice.
What I did is I did a comparison here in the uh spreadsheet that I put together, so I put the cost that were on the May third uh original budget put together. And then uh did revision on as of today, our next meeting, Mark Kurt spent, so it was weekend time, we did gather this for the night for us and then recreated everything, so we were able to get together this morning, put some of these figures together, but uh so our party was the football soccer and track facility and uh with some of the changes that we had with that facility, we had um we had a new building there, uh for what this was standing. It had some creating of the uh of that complex here, putting shop wood into the business area, adding some new grass adding some paths outside, uh that's the one area that we actually went up on, so that complex, uh we went from seven six to to seven eight. Uh so it was about a hundred and twenty thousand uh dollar difference that we had, which is giving some of the needs that you all were looking for. Others little bit of things to do that to do as well in terms of visiting parking, us to copy and order, uh you know, the stadium there, where this uh people practice, so they get it, so uh so that's the bad, uh the rest is a factor, so uh the baseball complex, uh we were able to save some dollars there, um I I think we still need to look at, uh what we're really uh trying to save, so I still left uh there's still some fine grading I feel against me down the stadium, but then the baseball field as well, some some regrade uh for Mr. Blake Free Friday, I think we did a bad, see, there was a few issues, a lot of savings as well, but it's probably gonna be a little conservative here until we get this, one of the best things in design. Uh the softball field, we did come down as well, I would get out the score sheet with the things in the last meeting. Uh I think I'll do score sheet because the words on the ground ones, you call part of the field, so uh so we're able to save some costs there, it was close sitting around, I'll bring it down. Uh the tennis courts, uh we did find some savings there, I had some leaves lost, we were getting some significant leaves, so uh I cut back about thirty thousand dollars, just uh to more simplified, uh leaves over there, and that's the rest of it, so we're able to save some dollars there. Uh the practice facilities, it's a little big round here too, so we were at one point nine for a uh nine nine hundred square foot, so nine thousand five hundred square foot, uh uh team building, so that's so what we've done is we've made sorry, two point nine for ninety five hundred square foot uh field house. Now we've run at fifteen point eight thousand square feet and we're at two point eight change, so we're able to save the cost on that, but also uh increase your square footage, so uh we still have a locker room, that's what Steve, you know, that we discussed, we still have to go, that's about four thousand square feet of that outspace and that rest of it is just kind of a practice space. Uh the concessions and the site improvements, the site improvements really, you know, wayfinding, uh signs, uh some security cameras, things like that, so we we looked at some of the costs that we carried back late May, you know, saved some costs off of that, so overall, uh we were at uh back in late May, we were at sixteen million six hundred fifty three thousand. Now with the bigger indoor rest facility, we're at sixteen million six hundred twenty five thousand. Uh so it's been savings, uh just by jockeying some things around of about twenty eight thousand dollars, uh but it sounds like it's what we're building is to give you something worth pushing, uh so and then I did uh, you know, break down the value of the tennis courts and which was, you know, just about nine hundred thousand dollars for that, uh the value without the tennis courts in there is fifteen seven, uh pretty much in bookcases, it would be fifteen thousand seven. So even so, I just book before you make the discussions, pushing and.
It it it's a little small on on our side here, but I I think we were able to follow what's what's going on. Any questions? I know we have some, maybe just thoughts, concerns? Nope, nope, it looks good.
And as they get into it, I think they can value into here, I guess we should ask about owner owner purchases, what I, is there a possibility for owner owner purchase items?
Yeah, so with the high school, we were, we did some owner purchases and were able to uh have some decent savings, but but we still have the opportunity to do that on this project as well? Yes, okay. Miss Runyon?
I just have a question for the board, um obviously I was absent from the last meeting, what was, did you guys discuss um what kind of savings you guys were looking for a figure wise? Cause what I'm seeing is a little shy of nine hundred thousand in savings for this right now. I didn't know if there was a savings number that everybody was looking for, or did y'all discuss anything?
No, the vast majority of the dis- the discussion, I think, was revolved around rotating baseball and softball field around.
Oh, fantastic.
And so, you know, with with the committee, uh the two meetings that we had, we certainly were trying to get ideas and encompass what all the coaches and student athletes were looking for, we were certainly hoping for um more cost savings to come out of that, but you know the coaches, you got one shot at this, so so I I I I think they were really looking to get as much as they could for each individual sport, which I get. Uh Mister Payne?
I uh thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was just trying to say, I I think we as you said, the goal, the the uh stated goal, I think, was not a specific savings target, was to make sure that we were creating uh desires and that sort of thing, so I think that was a great job, and all of that together to make sure that we create all of that, uh John and I were concerned earlier in the day, and that's why we're gonna be valuing this course, I've got it in interest for sacrificing, I just to show
Sixteen point five, sixteen.
what I had to do, uh because like we we manage, it's like approaching a million dollar package boards uh consideration if this if this logic were uh not acceptable, but it's just like, uh, so you can have the portion where fridge, you can have all the reusable packages area and also the sound, the power cushions, you know, the change, uh where boxes, where there's a second lower price.
Sure, yep, and I appreciate your efforts there. I appreciate your efforts there and, you know, you guys are on site, so there would be a cost savings if the board, majority of the board, wanted to move forward with this while you guys were here and you could transition straight over and start construction on or renovation of baseball, softball, I think was thrown out as first. Is it, is that a true statement? Correct, but if if you guys, yep, but if you guys were offsite and had to come back, then we're not talking about the figures here tonight, correct? Okay, yes. Michelle?
Can I just have confirm one more time, cause the the layout of the fields and the directions of the the baseball field, um i- is still a concern for me, can can we just clarify again that athletic director, whoever is comfortable with the field's layout being the way they are and it's not an issue with the sun or stands or anything like that?
So i- i- if I could, before you speak, so in the committee, I think it was the first meeting, uh I think everybody spoke pretty openly. That was never brought up by baseball, softball coach.
It was not.
It was not. Mister Clay, I think you asked the question about the orientation of the fields.
I did, and I asked-
I did, and I asked it at the end of the presentation. I asked all the coaches what they wanted, and we started off with tennis and softball, baseball were last. And I said, there's been conversations about rotating this field around. Baseball coach was very adamant that he did not want it, all of them was there, they were all adamant. Softball coach was very adamant, he didn't want it, AD was there, and he said he did not think it was a need for it neither, and so did Mr. Davis.
I mean, the first things we look at is security and of course budget, and if we move the orientation of the field, it probably costs, we were trying to stay within a budget and get all the things that the coaches needed. And we thought that moving the fields were, was not a big issue for us.
The uh fencing around softball was was brought up, the dugouts for baseball and just enhancing the the grass that's already on the field's kind of stuck out in my mind, is that?
That's right.
Okay.
So so is the is the decision a money decision, or is it that it's okay the way it is, like i- if if money was not a concern, obviously it is, I I'm I'm an accountant, I know money is an issue.
Yeah.
If it was not an issue, would the layout be better if the field was rotated?
To be honest with you, I'm scared to make that move or be a part of that move, cause over the past couple decades, we've been playing on that field with no sun issues, so I'm afraid if we move the orientation of home plate.
Cause of jinx.
Yes, yes.
And that was one of the comments that the baseball coach said, why would we wanna be hitting into the sun?
Yeah.
Our battles will be facing the sun in the evenings, and that was what he said.
Right, yeah.
That was what the head coach said.
Any other questions for Mr. Saunders?
Uh no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, that's twice now we've put you on the spot. Yes. Said Mr. Lloyd?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Yes, got you.
And I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Bane, Mr. Munt, who do his questions, Paul, Richard, Paula, I do apologize, I'm very familiar with the part of the presentation, I was making a scene, it was um showing David, it was from me, so I missed very personal voice on Mr. Munt's presentation as far as being able to see it, I could hear. Uh I guess my question for Kim or for for number, if they could just go in and summarize what changes were being made to both softball and baseball, I'm just about to please.
So for the most part, they'll be very similar, I think what we got out of the meeting uh was that they actually, that they liked the fields, um and that they could. Scale that back now, now basically, just so you all understand, the baseball field, I have two hundred eighty six thousand dollars in there, for prepping that field, uh there's the infield, outfield irrigation, and then working that field, uh also with drainage, which is part of that number. For the softball field, I have a hundred forty eight thousand dollars to go in there and prep that field, uh with my irrigation or my drainage out there, so. My goal would be to see if we can save some costs on that, I'm just not comfortable right now until we start talking with the civil engineer and really, you know, digging out, seeing maybe various variations of the uh. The grades out there, especially in the outfield, to see what need to do, uh with that, you know, the lift between the infield and outfield, you know, reworking that, make sure, you know, the the coaches are, uh, might be sensible, so. I just want everybody to know, it's like I don't have a big lot of money here to prep these fields, uh we try, I think, you know, be, you know, reasonable with that, but uh. We're gonna get it and tear it up some of this uh, we start working on rain and reserve with irrigation, so there's gonna be some of that we have to do, and and some was a great application was a good way. But uh, so but basically the fencing will be replaced, uh you know, we're still planning on, you know, uh renovating the concession, uh after areas, uh pretty much, those fields were pretty close, so.
Mr. Chairman, I ask how long?
Yes, sir.
So uh I'm pretty light, I'm actually not seeing enough pretty uh fresh, okay?
Yes, yes.
Specifically, you have it hiding or something, I don't know, I'll see.
Yes, sir.
Restream areas would be enhanced, concession area would be enhanced, uh.
Yes.
And then I would I would hope that, I mean, this was a lot of audit, I mean, there will be some work done to the play surface, there's some that, the baseball field especially, it looks really good when you're sitting in the stands, but there's a lot of uh uneven areas and rough spots throughout the field. So I would hope there would be work as far as uh very used to getting to the playing surface, is that, is that unfair or something?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's why we felt there's gonna be some minor laser grading that we have to, um, just, you know, when we are looking at it, we're just just making sure between infield and outfield, uh and any low spots might be in the outfield. Uh as well as making sure that there's a good drainage to uh the outfield, so just make sure we keep that, that field running, and then one of the complaints that I understand with the softball field was, was some sogging stuff out there in the outfield, making sure that we do address that, so.
And and I do a part, I failed to ask about the dugouts, what what are the plans for the dugouts, if you don't mind me asking?
Softball would just be, uh, just sort of limited, we could reuse, just uh dugouts, mix them up, uh new dugouts based on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Michelle?
Mr. Munt, this is probably for you, um, there you are, um, next steps, I'm assuming. We need a board, board vote agreement to move forward, if we, uh there are some changes we were talking about, so so what do you need, cause I know you need to do permits and stuff like that, so so what's the next steps that you need from us to move forward?
Um, well, if if you all decide tonight that this is the direction that you wanna move forward, um then we're gonna start doing more uh complete drawing, the drawings that Shaki will actually be able to build from, and as we do that, we're gonna have lots of questions. We will be forwarding those questions to Dr. Husken and Chairman Mason, uh and then they can distribute those questions uh to the best person to answer it, and uh, you know, we'll we'll move forward as quickly as we can.
Okay, so is the plan for the board before permits are are drawn with the design that we have one more review and approval of it with some of the changes, or or what's, what's you guys' thoughts on that? And then we have the committee set up, that will answer a lot of the questions, will it come back to us before it's finalized, in case we have something come up that we think of in the next couple weeks, month?
I think, you know, if we like the concept and where this is headed, maybe approve this, I mean, I I know with the, I wasn't on the board with the high school, but I know there was significant uh meetings and changes made. Even after the approval of the of the project, so um I think with Groom and Parker and Shaki, maybe looking for is, do we like the direction, maybe not every single thing. Uh the ticket booth, maybe it's down here, maybe it's up there, but whatever, but um I think the general direction and concept, is the majority of the board ready to move forward with that, I think is what they're looking for.
And the timeline for the permits, cause I know you were talking in the last meeting that it was, we're getting to the deadline, that's really for the baseball and softball fields, because we need to get started on those, right? So the permits for the football field doesn't need to be done or anything yet.
We'll be working on all the drawings simultaneously, but yes, baseball and softball are phase one, so that that's the permit application that needs to be made first.
I I agree, I think this is the direction we need to go, the cost is what we were expecting it to be, I would make a motion that we um allow them to continue in this direction with these plans.
Motion on the floor to uh continue with the concepts that have been uh shown to us tonight?
Second.
Roll call then.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Bane?
Uh it's my assumption that the sports desire that we've been formed with the new, new facility, that we should have received, that this facility should not make there, it's it's not uh, it is on a good scheme desire to. Except on soft since this looks on one, and as we stated earlier, that's the end of that point, so it's a big clarification, I heard that it is a week, usually all of them, seven four thousand.
Correct, it would be this plan that has been presented to us tonight.
Yes. Motion, second. Any other discussion?
I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coleman.
So, the amount of money that Dr. Buckley presented us was sixteen million three hundred and fourteen, this is at six, sixteen, six twenty five, six oh nine, that's a difference of three hundred and we'll just say twelve thousand dollars for simple math sakes. Where is that money gonna come from?
So hopefully this price will come down a little bit, and the one percent tax will continue, the interest off the bond will start to go down, but that that bucket will continue to have some some funds accumulated in it in it as well.
He told us today it makes a hundred and forty thousand a month, so we'll have that in a couple months.
And you don't pay this one time?
A hundred and.
Yeah.
So you pay it in.
Pay it in drawdowns.
Paying in drawdowns.
And assuming that this follows the same process that we did with the high school on a much smaller scale, this is where they are, as they continue to do pricing and start getting um bids and all of that, that the prices will become more refined. So they have high level estimates at this point, but before we actually sign the contract, we'll have a um, a an exact number, not exact, but you know.
A much better idea.
Yes, so my question to that is, is that if something unforeseen catastrophic happens, and we're still different, three hundred and twelve thousand, are y'all willing to cut that much money out of this project? So that we do not go over this untouchable budget?
I am, absolutely.
Because, Mr. Saunders, are you willing to work with your people to cut three hundred and twelve thousand out of this budget if something happens and we don't have that extra income? I'm sorry to keep putting you on the spot, but this is your baby.
I can't speak for everyone, but at this point, we we're grateful for what we did.
Right, I am doing my best to compromise, because I know something needs to be done, and I do not want to be the sole reason that we don't get anything, this is just a lot of taxpayer money. And it's all happening very, very quickly, and I have a really big problem with quickly spending money that is not my personal money. I'm putting a lot of faith in y'all, a whole lot of faith that we keep this thing under budget. Because we have to answer to students, employees, peoples who depend on us to pay their bills, so I'm putting a lot of trust. Alright, let's get into it.
Mr. Chairman, we also.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman, I appreciate that, and I know you and I have talked about this.
We also, our our trust goes to both ways, one, the trust goes into us to make sure we make the right decision for us, has nothing to do with the budget, totally. See, we keep forgetting, and we can't ask for this money, but we seem like we don't wanna do that for whatever reason, because we never been told no before, then, once we've been told no, then we can go do all this cutting. But what we're trying to do is set up to be cut before we even get there, so all we're doing is doing what we did for the school, I'm just telling you straight up, that's what we did. We might not get there, we might, we need to cut this, we need to cut that, we cut forty million bucks, forty million, and we kept screwing around, that's what happened. Paid forty million too much money for this school, so y'all don't trust me, ask Doc Buck, but we need, go ahead and do this, and take the appropriate actions we need to take to get the money. So we need, you know, close up this car bag or peanut bag and go ask somebody, can we get this money? Cause we haven't said anything about asking anybody for, we're just saying if it don't come this way, then I won't do it, maybe that'll give somebody some input into it if they do. We don't know.
Yes, Michelle.
Just one more point of clarification as well, the funding for this is, it's not coming out of property taxes, it's not coming out of county sales taxes.
Good point.
It's all based on the one percent sales.
Thank you.
Tax referendum that was done, so it's it's interest we've earned on that, that's over and above what we thought we were getting, it's additional revenue that's over and above what we what we projected to get, so. So none of this is coming directly out of taxpayers' money, obviously, as it is, cause it's a tax, but um it's not coming out of the school system, so even if we had to pay three hundred thousand out of the school system's budget, if that's all we pay. Out of our operational budget for a new athletic facility for the next fifty years, I I think that is money well spent, but again, the the sixteen point three million is not coming out of individual taxpayers' money, because it is from the one percent.
Great point. Any other discussion, or can we move forward with roll call vote? Yes, ma'am.
District one, Mrs. Runyon?
No.
District two, Mr. Lloyd?
Yes.
District four, Mr. Mason?
Yes.
District five, Mr. Clay?
Yes.
District six, Ms. Shatwell? Yes. District seven, Mrs. Coleman? Yes. District eight, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Alright, anything else, gentlemen? That you all need from us? Thank you for your partnership and look forward to seeing the school to a to a end really soon and getting moving on this, so thank you so much for all your work on this. Thank you. Well, from one project to another, Mr. Ellway?
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Good evening, thanks for joining us.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody, thanks for having me to give an update on the new high school, another piece of the puzzle that y'all been talking about for a while tonight. Um, if you want to, I'll uh just say that we're in the home stretch, I mean, we are, I looked today at the kind of our milestone schedules that I'll highlight, we're exactly one month from open house from the the new high school. And there's been a lot of progress that's been made since, you know, the last school board meeting, where we provided an update, and uh there's still some work to do, but uh the end's in sight, and we've got a plan to make sure that school's open when kids and uh teachers show up, so. Uh some of the progress, I'll start with the outside of the building, uh the landscaping and seating, if you drove by, you can see is nearly complete, still some more seating to do, um that's minor stuff. The final paving is done, I'll show some pictures here in a minute, all the striping of the parking lot is complete. Uh the practice soccer field's been graded, that's been seeded as well, so we'll see some grass growing back there pretty soon. The concrete curbs that were damaged during construction, which is pretty typical, they, those have all been repaired. The uh IT, the fiber line, uh that is coming from the Little Caesar's Pizza to the building is complete now, uh floor clo- coverings are nearly complete. Uh in the gym, the competition gym, the walking jogging area up above, uh those lanes have been delineated delineated or put on the, put on the plant, painted, as you can almost say. Uh the wrestling mat hoist has been installed, the wall pads are being installed, you'll see some really nice pictures of that in a second. Uh all the the bleachers are in, first level and the up above on the second level now, uh if you move into the auditorium, all the seating has been installed, the the stage, the wood stage board has been installed, curtains are being hung. And then the CTE equipment actually has been uh delivered and installed as well. Couple procurement items, uh the small appliances uh have been, uh that procurement is in, has happened, the trophy case uh is in discussion, that procurement is uh in the process of happening as well. Uh so that's the new high school, the existing high school, the abatement and demo, we've actually started the abatement survey, that happened last week. I think they may come back and do a few more samples, but they're about to wrap up their report of all the hazardous materials that have gotta be abated. Uh the surplus sale uh is in the process of being scheduled, um permitting, there are some permitting things that we're working through to make sure all that's in place before we. Package everything together and put the uh bid package out for bids for the abatement demolition, uh which will happen this fall, this winter, and then our plan is to turn this over and be done with it in the spring of twenty six. Uh this is our milestone schedule, uh it's good news, uh the building official gave us a temporary certificate of occupancy, uh his last, he inspected the building all last week, and on Friday, he gave us a what we call TCO. He actually emailed it over the weekend, and we got that in our hands, um that allows us to continue to move furniture and doing all the things we need to do to get ready for the school to open. We can't have people in there yet, there's still too much going on, uh but that was an important milestone that uh happened on Friday. Uh and then we got all the tables and chairs starting to move in over the next few weeks, uh the interior cafeteria tables show up a week from now. Um the main classroom furniture actually starts this week, on Wednesday, uh then we got small appliances, the big thing is the move of all those. Uh, then we got small appliances. The big thing is the move of all those boxes from the existing high school over into the new school. That actually starts next Monday. Uh, that'll take a little bit of time uh to get two thousand plus boxes of stuff over into the new school. Um, well, we're shooting that final completion, final TCO is by the end of July. Um, and then the teachers return August fourth, uh open house I mentioned is August fourteenth, and then the first day of school is August eighteenth. So that's our plan to have everything fall in place. Now we got pictures. Uh, this is the front of the school. Uh, as a, pretty much today, you see the main entrance straight in front, the classroom, what we call classroom wing A on the left, you can see the paving's done, the striping of the lanes. Uh, there's some landscaping in, some seeding going in those grassy areas. This is the gym. Uh, you can see the striping around the the walking uh area on the top floor there. Um, you can see wall pads going in there now, bleachers are all in, gym's pretty much done, looks really nice. This is the auditorium. If you're sitting in the upper level looking down towards the stage, you see all the seating is in. Uh, they're working on on the stage area there, I mentioned the curtains are being hung. So the auditorium has really come together in the last few weeks. This is a view from the stage looking up. You see all the acoustical pa- panels, the baffles, um all the seating. Looks really nice. And then this is the media center. If you remember last month, it was empty. We now have all the case worked in. We're just waiting for books and those things to be put in there here shortly. I mentioned about the paving and the striping, this is the student parking lot. It's all striped, it's all, it's complete, it's ready for students to park in. This is the cafeteria dining room area, the other, we call it the south entrance. Um, so I mentioned earlier, all those cafeteria tables getting ready to start showing up, those will be placed in this space, build it up. Last picture, this is in the CTE area, these are the lifts that have been installed and the automotive section, so. Things have really come together, school looks really nice. A little bit of work to do, but we're just close.
Very good.
Any questions for me?
Mr. Lloyd asked, could you email that presentation to Dr. Husken or me and we'll 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 share that? That's easy.
Yep.
I have one question. I don't know if Dr. Husken can answer it. I'll be quick, I s- I promise.
You're good.
Were they able to fix the issues that I presented to him? So all that has been taken care of?
Bath, those those uh bathrooms have interior doors, all of that, and there's a, there's a sink in that other room that we talked about, all that's done.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Lloyd.
So, everything was good. Thank you for the presentation. When was the last time you guys over, walked around the inside of the facility?
Uh, I was there today. I did, I did a drive-by.
Did you? Did a drive-by, okay.
Yeah.
I was over there yesterday. I did a walk-by. I live less than a mile from it. There's a lot of water concerns that I've got and other people have got. There's water standing up against this building. That, that minor landscaping is not gonna take care of.
Can you, can you identify which side of the building?
Oh yeah, just walk around it, all around it. I mean, I stepped off the concrete, went over the top of my shoes. And it was at the front door, on both sides. And go around the backside where the students enter, it's sloped away from the school. The left-hand side is sloped to the school. And the water is going right to the school and it's nothing but a huge mud spot. It's gotta be some dirt or some, I'm not a contractor or anything, but I know when you look at the block on the wall, it's wet, it's a water issue. And the block at the bottom of that wall is wet, all the way around the school just about.
We'll take a look at it. Steve's been punching the school here every day. Uh, we'll give a shocky and take a look and see if we have something different.
Yeah, I mean, that's a hu- yeah, that's a huge concern. I mean, because I mean, I know we have a wet year, but still, I mean. You know, the citizens here talk about the last previous school when it was built, it was in a wet area. And if we've got water issues, I think we need to probably go ahead and address them if it's filling in with dirt. And also, when you're talking about those spots that's being filled in, and I got a picture, the dirt they're bringing in is full of concrete, rocks, brick, and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, there's a, there's a pros- that's part of the punch list too. They have to get all that big rocks, everything out of there sort of drained.
Yeah, so one area where all that stuff is, I don't think you get a bulldozer in there, so what? Cause I mean, they tried, look, you can see where they got stuck, right beside the sidewalk. So that.
Well, we'll take a look. If you don't mind sending the picture to Dr. Husken, she can get them to us. That would help.
Okay. Okay.
So.
You got some pictures of that?
Yes, sir.
All of that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Michelle.
Can, can we have, can we have our operations director or something walk around to them? Cause I I know Mr. Clay's had these concerns for months and and it it comes up every, every meeting. Can we have someone from the school walk, or Mr. Clay, if he's able to walk around and and point out these areas and make sure that they're resolved?
Yes.
Be that.
Okay.
We don't want any water in that building either, so.
No, sir, that's a, it it, but it's water standing, especially on that back and the front side. I mean, it's puddled up right there. When you walk in the front door of the school. When you walk up to the doors, you look either way. There's water standing everywhere.
I'll take a look.
Maybe after that, if we could get a report to the school board members, just so that we're all getting the same information on that.
Yep. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate everything. Thanks. Mr. Lewis.
Good evening. Good evening, sir. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, here this evening to talk about our athletic regulations. Uh, just before I start, I would say that uh both Mr. Saunders and Mr. Poway have been working on this for some time before we formed this committee. Uh, with a real focus on consistency between the two schools and the two athletic programs. So uh they had worked with their principals quite a bit uh before we got together. Uh, we had a lot of discussion about this and to make sure that both programs were very consistent in the way they discipline athletes should something happen. Uh, I was also pleased to find out from both schools that it was not very often that we had to go back to these regulations. Because most of our students, athletes are doing the right thing. Uh, so you do see our committee members there, so composed of myself, both principals and both athletic directors. I did include in here for you guys, if you wanted to read, I go for the regulations, the links, uh so that you can pull those up and read them, they are quite lengthy. Uh, so I wasn't gonna sit here tonight and and read all of that information to you guys, but I did include it in here just in case you wanted to to look at them. So some of the key updates that we have, of course, the VHSL requirements are what they are. Uh, so at the high school, you have to pass three out of four, and at the middle school, you have to pass five out of six. And you also have to have an athletic physical on file. So the things that are part of this regulation are are the student in good standing requirements. And and this is leading up to trials and I wanna point that out. So they're not yet on the team. So these are things that both of our schools are expecting for our students participating in extracurricular activities and sports to do. Uh, so they're Dubai by Halifax County attendance and tardy policies. I mean, we've, we've had, that's documented in our county. That we need our students in the school, so that's something that that both schools agree upon. Y'all also need to miss no more than four unexcused days per nine weeks. I mean, that's still a lot of days. You miss four every nine weeks, that's simple math, that's sixteen absences, so. That's still too many. Uh, so we're hoping to be even less than that. Uh, not being suspended out of school. You know, so we want our student athletes to to s- to set the tone for the rest of our population. And of course, not cheated or violated the honor code. Uh, so so those are some of the key things leading up to the trial process. Uh, so this is a big update, the next page here, thank you, Dr. Hawks. Uh, and and one thing that was important for our athletic directors and principals was to align the discipline with the levels that are in our code of conduct. So this chart uh is aligned and it doesn't cite every example of what a level one violation would be or level two. It does cite some examples uh of what could happen. So any level three, four, or five is is really just an automatic dismissal. You know, those would be your major violations. Uh, weapon, drugs, things of those nature. Uh, so and it works backwards, they of course, level two, some things in the middle, tobacco, vapes, disrupted behavior. Uh, so you would get a suspension of games and also have to uh participate in a educational component or some kind of contract. Uh, with the athletic director. Of course, level one is lesser discipline. So not gonna read all of this chart, but it was important for us as a committee to to align it with what our code of conduct says. So if we're following our code of conduct and we're following this, then back to that consistency piece, then we're not gonna have one form of intervention at the middle school and one at the high school. They're gonna be identical. And that was, that was what we set out to make sure would happen. Of course, here's some, some things here, uh it's just a written form of what we were just talking about. Uh, of course, number six there, we bolded, and and number three, I'll start with number three. Uh, y'all have to forgive me, I'm colorblind, it looks a little bit the same to me. But uh students who receive a ten-day suspension, well, they're automatically dismissed from the program. Uh, we felt like those are gonna be your higher level violations. And if you're exhibiting that behavior in school, then you you don't need to be participating in extracurricular. And then also, uh, number six there, uh has a zero tolerance for any drug, alcohol. Um, any, any athlete found in violation of those would automatically be dismissed. Looks like my numbering got off a little bit there too. Uh, but that's okay. Uh, so those were the two I'd I'd like point. In in addition, the behavioral contract that I spoke of earlier. So if somebody's in season and gets in in some kind of minor trouble, then the the player and the parent would have to sign this contract. That hey, you're on probation here, if something in addition happens, then you may be dismissed from the team. So it's also a learning process there for the student. Uh, so some points of emphasis that we came up with, that it would be consistency between the two programs. Uh, that it would be aligned with our current uh code of conduct, that would have accountability uh for our folks involved in extracurricular activities. Uh, have a positive impact on school climate and something that we intend to do is share this regulation with families, you know, prior to school opening. Uh, so because these are regulations, it doesn't require action of this board. Uh, but we do want support from this board as we work with all of our students and of course, our student athletes as well. So thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much for sharing that. I think it is important that uh these policies do align. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mason, can I ask you one question?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Comer. Yes.
Um, on the, Dr. Hawks, can you go back one slide? That one. On number five, it said that if they want to dismiss a player from the team, there must be a conference with the player, the coach, and the A D before dismissal can take place. Would it not be prudent to put the parent in there as well?
Yes, we could certainly add that. And that's, that's the key thing about a regulation is that if we need to add the parent, I I think it's probably inferred there, but certainly we can make sure we add.
Right.
You know, parent as well, a guardian, parent guardian. You guys helped me remember that.
Mr. Lloyd.
No, I appreciate you putting this together. Um, this is something that both programs need. We need to be consistent from middle school all the way through. And so the the principals and can be on the same page and they gotta ask back and forth and it makes you guys life a whole lot easier, I would think.
Yeah, I really, really uh thank the athletic directors and principals. I I came in on the tail end just from experience and things, but they really put the the back work into it, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank them, yeah.
Mr. Cox.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Lewis, could you explain to me why there was a discrepancy between the high school and the middle school on these class action suits we had done? Well, um, I think it was racial intention in both of them. And that for some, somebody in the middle school or high school was not expelled from activities? As far as the sports and the other one was, our contract was rendered between them and the family? Was there a difference in the, in the ruling or there wasn't a ruling uh available in in the uh. Guidelines that you have? Because I asked you about it and I asked our af- the HR person about it. And I got flip-flop stories about why this happened. And I wanted to know why, why if they got to fighting. The athletes got to fighting because they were apparently were calling each other names, racial names and what have you. And of course, they said they gotta clean it out, but the fighting still took place. So I was wondering why that didn't come before the, the committee?
Right, so so that, not all fights would come before a disciplinary committee, number one. But I I think that was the primary purpose we wanted to get together. And of course, our athletic directors had already done so, was that our two regulations weren't, weren't the same. Uh, so we have now corrected that issue. Uh, we have two regulations that are the same, that have the same level response to if something happens. In in this case, could be a fight or it could be other things as well. Uh, you know, so Title IX is separate from disciplinary procedures to begin with. So that goes through the Title IX process. Uh, but not all fights at the, at the middle school, whether it be an athlete or an non-athlete, come before the discipline panel or even before myself. Uh, sometimes that's handled internally by the principal or assistant principal with, you know, perhaps a three or five day suspension. Uh, so the regulation at the middle school at the time this incident took place, didn't call for an immediate dismissal from the team.
After the fight.
After the fight. So that's why, and and I wasn't involved in all those conversations either. But they followed the regulation from my understanding at that time, which allowed those students to return or student athletes to return to the program with a behavioral contract. Uh, so but the Title IX piece of that is something that's totally separate.
But Title IX is sitting over here, but you still gotta put in outward thing. And so the people in in in, out here in the streets think that because they're trying to figure out why these kids didn't get put off the team because they played ball. And if you, you just said if they were playing ball and got into a fight like that, we wouldn't have them representing Halifax, whether they. Title IX was involved in it or not.
So I think now, yes, sir, under, under this, these regulations.
Not, not, not on, on, on which ones, the new ones or the old ones?
Right, this is under these new regulations that the penalties are, it's a level process. So I'm not saying every single fight is an automatic dismissal from a program. Obviously, if that happens during or before a tryout, then they're not a student in good standing and they wouldn't be at a trial. If it happens during the season, then it would be an evaluation of the level process with the principal and the athletic director and coach to see if that person would be removed. And should the fight be severe enough to be a ten-day suspension, then it would be an automatic removal from the program.
What they gotta do, get hit in the head with a baseball bat before it'd be suspended? I mean, that, a fight is a fight.
Obviously, they hit somebody with a baseball bat, then I'm gonna be on the team.
Yeah, this is gonna be more than that. This is gonna be, the laws are being enforced in it.
Many other things.
Cause it seems to me we went out of the way to uh give these guys a way out so they can continue playing ball. And it's obvious to me that that shouldn't have happened. If they fighting, I don't care what Title IX says, they still are fighting. So, but the other one wasn't a fight. It was putting their hands on a person.
Right, now things, most of us agree with what you're saying, and that's why, that's why we had to go back to these regulations and up.
But but because the regulations didn't jive out from, from what I'm saying, so I, I wouldn't have got to run around, I got, well, they said this and this, they said that. So because the regulations were screwed up, you had to make them up straight and then do what you did, which was nothing. But at the same time, two people got away with fighting and nothing was done about it. And just, did they do something about that or maybe I'm not aware of that?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we kinda edging around people's personal rights and things like that, even talking about it. So it was, was action taken.
No, that's not a personal right thing, that, that, the personal right way, when, when the kid gets into a fight and come into a board meeting?
Mr. Chair, I have no further comment on this. I, I think we're violating.
I, I, I think, I think we're really tiptoeing around there.
How, how do you violate somebody's rights if you haven't called their name, sir, Mr. Chair?
I have no further comments.
Huh? I know you got no comment, you don't wanna get it.
We're talking about the situation, so.
No, you can't, we can talk about the situation, long you don't call the name. Oh, that's a lie, y'all know that.
I just can't, cause I, I feel like people are gonna identify you talking about, Mr. Cox. I'd.
It's, it's, it's a small town, small community, I mean, people.
Say what?
Yeah, action was taken by the school, you know, I realize maybe some thought it should have been more.
It sounded like some, Mr. Paulson actually was taking this one.
But action was taken by the school in this situation and and I, I just don't wanna have parents calling me talking about, why are you talking about my child?
So is that the same thing we're supposed to do when somebody gets a fight in regular school? We're not supposed to come back and talk about that too?
Not in open session.
Not in open session, no, we're not.
No, sir. I'm not trying to be difficult, I promise. I mean, I want the best for our programs and students and I just don't wanna, I don't wanna parent upset at us.
Yep. Agreed.
Mr. Lloyd, do you have something?
Yeah, so let me talk about what's obvious to me for one second. What's obvious to me is there was a problem found and we addressed it and we had it fixed. And that's great, thank you for that. Um, that's what we're here for. That's our job, is to hold accountable, make policy, check the policies, make sure.
And that's great. Thank you for that. Um, that's what we're here for. That's our job, is to hold accountable, make policy, check the policies, make sure that they're correct in, in all forms. And that is what has been done. So thank you very much for doing that. I appreciate it. I would like to make a comment, um, on the positive side for our athletics. Um, I'm not just, I don't, I'm not just a school board member. Obviously, we all have children in the school system. I have a son who plays athletics as well. So I want to make sure that the public is aware that I personally, as a parent, have seen the changes in our athletics. I have seen the positive changes. I have seen the charisma of being a comment and being a student athlete change in a year's time, so much where I am proud of what we've done. So aside from everything else, thanks to all the coaches, the athletic directors, to you, Mr. Lewis, anybody that has a hand in, in making our students. Because being a student athlete is a privilege. And so in order to make sure that they are valuing that privilege, I feel like we are holding them to standards that everybody should, should be so lucky to hold all of their student athletes to. So thank you for that.
Excellent, excellent. Michelle?
Yeah, two questions, quick questions for you. Um, are there any differences now? Uh, I know that's how this came up, is differences were found between the two policies. Are there any differences between the high school and the middle school other than contacts, or can these two documents just be made one document for both the schools?
Yeah, so, so I think we could eventually get to a place where we merge both of them, but it is, it is some differences between the middle school programs and the high school programs because of the age difference and things like that. So I, so I think eventually we could get to a common document, but to do that in the length of time we had, probably not feasible, but over time, I, I, I believe they could be merged. Uh, so there were some key differences that, that Coach Powell and, and Coach Saunders were able to bring up. I was, I've had experience at both levels, but they're in it every day right now with their principals, so I, I think in time, we probably could merge it into just one.
When you have, you know, a spare, you know, five minutes, right? Um, and then, uh, second question, I, I know there's been some, some issues in the past about dress code for our athletes. Is that something that, um, I know it was mentioned at one point that it might be included in, in this?
Yes, it's, it's addressed in here, and Coach Saunders might can help me. He's been called out a couple times tonight, but.
Why not again, right?
I, I, I haven't memorized all of it. I do remember reading specifically in both of them, though, that, that it will be outlined by the coaches. So, you know, coaching staff also held it at expectation, of course, our student athletes too, that they'll, they'll be dressed appropriately for whatever activity. So it, it is covered. To remember specifics, I don't, but, uh, certainly is an expectation that we have pride in what we do.
Yeah, it is, just as you said, that, that they will follow, or from what I've seen, is that they'll follow the dress code. So maybe if we get to some point in the future where we're not able to resolve it at the coach level, we put it in the policy and, and just outline what our standard dark for, for the athletes. Um, but overall, thank you. Uh, I appreciate the updates.
So Mr. Chair, I have a question on that. Is that just, just for the players, or that's for the, I thought that was gonna be on the coaches to make sure that they're dressed properly at these events?
Yeah, yeah, so. So certainly, we want all of our people, uh, coaches included, and, you know, no, no different if administrators are working the game, they're gonna try to wear similar tops. So that's an expectation that we have for our coaches and programs too. So, so it's, it's specific to whichever sport, so baseball, they may be wearing the actual jersey, or they may be wearing a hidden top. You know, football, they may have a cap and, and a polo shirt that night. So, so yes, those are expectations that we have for our coaches as well. Uh, and, and from there, it trickles down to our athletes being dressed, you know, appropriately.
So they are aware of this as of tonight or before?
Yeah, I, I would assume they've been aware of it before, but certainly that's an expectation that, that's always been there.
They need it here.
Am I right? I mean, principals, guys?
Principals here.
I mean.
We definitely address the professionalism part of coaches and trickle-down to our players. Um, everybody's been aware before this meeting, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's should be the standard, and that, I'm a proud company, y'all. I, I spent many, many years here in this division. At twenty-five exactly, I've coached and played and, uh, been a principal too, and, I mean, that's something that's just pride. I mean, that's something we wanna have pride in our lines and our comments, so.
Yep, very good.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Michelle?
One, one last one. I, I know you said that, that you don't need our approval, but you want our support and.
Definitely want you guys' support. Uh, it's not, not something that necessarily needs action by the way of a boot, but certainly a, a nod, uh, that we're headed in the right direction. I, I believe we all have to work in with these folks, uh, and, and hearing the success stories, uh, back from parents and, and things that this is being very impactful.
Yeah, we're doing a fantastic job.
I'm okay with, with voicing our agreement. If you guys are, are good with it, I would, I would, um, make a motion that we, uh, approve the recommended changes, just to show that we do, do support it.
Second.
I, I do have one thing to say, um, involving this. With our code, I, I, I'd also like to get this going again, and I know it was in place years ago, is getting our high school coaches and all the programs to collaborate with our middle school coaches. To be successful, that high school coach has pretty much gotta run that whole program. And, and the collaboration there, I think this is a startup. High school, middle school, cause the middle school's going to the high school, and running the programs, running the code of conduct. If they're all on the same page, it's just, just a revolving door. And I think you guys are on the right page, and, and I, I, I think this is great.
And I would personally like, Mr. Chair, to see more pride explore, explain to the players. Cause if the coaches don't have pride, or they got problems with it, then the team gonna not have pride. And that's what I've observed through the last few years, when we put in the wrong folk, and when we play the coach's son to pass and all that kind of crap, be throwing the ball everywhere but to the player. See, that kind of falls dead on, on the pla- on the players. So we need to make sure we show some pride, in order to get some pride, everybody out there have some pride, not just you two, but everybody, that's including us. Cause I got some pride. I got plenty of, plenty of power for you to show that.
Be common supporter. I know that from years, you know, being at the same field with you, so we appreciate that.
You got that right.
We want everybody to have that same pride in our, our, our school, children anyway, every, every age, certainly our sports too.
Motion on the floor. We had a second. We've had a little discussion. Any other comments before we vote, uh, in support of, uh, adopt, adopt, adopting this, uh, code of conduct? Easy for me to say. Uh, all in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed say no? Thank you all.
Thank you.
This is a step in the right direction. Mr. Davis?
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Husk, and Board Members, uh, good evening. Uh, including you, Packet, uh, you have a copy of the May twenty-five, uh, policy updates. This is an action item. Um, as we spoke last month, there are a total of forty, uh, policy updates. Um, so I ask for, uh, the policy be, uh, approved so that we can add it to our policy manual.
Move.
Motion on the floor, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed say no? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
You have the floor, along with your sidekick, Mr. Garber there.
Yes, sir. I have Mr. Garber here with me. Um, uh, this is an action item as well. Uh, as you recall, last month, uh, Mr. Garber and myself presented the draft version of the capital improvement plan. Um, and as a reminder, this is a true working document. Um, your approval this evening, just to the deposit, we're gonna continue to do the necessary steps to make sure that we try to, um, improve our buildings, improve our surroundings, and, um, have a spirit of preventive maintenance. Um, last month, there was a couple of questions of, of what were some of the, the critical priority needs. Uh, and I have Mr. Garber to give a brief update on those. Um, two right now pressing needs are, uh, the well at Clay's Mill and the, the chimney at the, at the middle school. So, Mr. Garber, would you kind of give an update on that, please?
Well, the well at Clay's Mill, the, the original well, the three gallons a minute. If everything goes perfect, it survives a day. If anything turns white, we lose water, no water to the school. So that's, that's the reason we're drilling a new well. Um, water's scarce, heard that. So they started drilling, they called me the other day, they were at four hundred and twenty feet, no water. So we had the discussion and we said, let's go to six hundred feet, see what happens. At five hundred and eighty foot, they hit over thirty gallons a minute, so, so we saved pretty, got all the water we could ever need. Uh, the chimney, the guys have worked really hard. It's almost completely down. Uh, they'll finish that this week, I'm sure. So that's, that's two projects that's, we're gonna wrap them up pretty quick, anyway. The well, we still have a lot of testing to do. The Department of Health has a lot of hoops you gotta jump through. We got the water, so we're welling it up.
Well, well, well.
We're doing well. So those two are the two main priorities that we have right now, and certainly as the year, uh, uh, progresses. Uh, we'll be working closely with the facilities committee. Uh, it's our goal to probably schedule a meeting with, in the next couple of days, just kind of give an, on, overview and do a deeper dive of what are some of the next steps, uh, that we want to try in, in cor- incorporated, uh, in the capital improvement plan. Um, since the last meeting, just to give an update on this, we, we spoke of the transportation department having an auction. Uh, and I wanna, uh, give, uh, huge kudos to, uh, Mr. Garber, his team, uh, and, uh, Mr. Melly and his team at the transportation. Um, we had a very successful auction. Um, we received, uh, a, a check for eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cent. Uh, and those funds will be reverted into the, uh, into the general, the general operating fund. So, um, we got some of the older, uh, vehicles, um, sold. I think we sold all, with the exception of, I think, three, three or four.
Sold all?
We sold all, okay. Uh, Miss Cole, we sold all the veh- vehicles that you all had approved as surplus. Um, so this is, uh, money that we're getting back and can be, uh, repurposed for, for other things in the division. Um, so at this point, um, uh, I would like to, uh, receive a motion to, um, accept this capital improvement plan, understanding that we are still continuing to work, and this is a revolving working document.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Nice. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed say no?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Davis, you have the floor?
Yes, sir. The, the last thing, um, on, I, I believe it was Friday morning, uh, V S B A sent, um, which is unusual, a policy update for July. Um, so there are only three policy updates for the month of July, and I, as I flip through them, there's just basically, they're, they're changing the, the, the codes, Virginia codes as a result of the general assembly. Uh, so these are three. This is first read. Uh, I'll come back next, uh, month with the, uh, final version, uh, for you all to approve.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Are we done? All right.
I don't know.
Pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven of the Code of Virginia, a move of the board committee to close meeting for the purpose of considering the following specific matters. A personnel, the appointment, resignation, and salaries of specific division employees is authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven. And that's it.
I make a motion to go in closer.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Didn't we say we were gonna bring up something I was talking about in, 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 in the new business?
Well, yeah, we needed to, I guess, put it in, we need to put it in new business.
For next meeting.
I'll go with that. Thank you, bye.
For next meeting, okay. Fair enough. Motion, second. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed say no? This part is adjourned?
And I could explain it to him in close second.
Yes, hon.